Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Painesville Township Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting. I would like to call our meeting to order. Thank you for joining in. Typically, at this point, we would stand and do the pledge of allegiance, but since we're doing this again by virtual meeting, we will dispense with that and we'll move on to the roll call. Rachel, I'll ask you if you could take the roll, please?
Okay, Dave Anzera.
Here.
Ken Sullivan.
Here.
Randy Van Buren.
Here.
Dave Lindros.
Here.
And Tom Hill, who is absent tonight.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. I'm serving as the Chair for, as Vice Chair for running the meeting this evening in our chair's absence, Mr. Hill. The next item on the agenda is the swearing in of witnesses. So Jason, could you say a few words on that?
Sure. For those of you who don't know, my name's Jason Hartzell. I'm filling in tonight for Jeremy Iosu, who is the legal advisor for Painesville Township. These proceedings are considered quasi judicial proceedings. Any aggrieved party can appeal, has the option to appeal the Board of Zoning Appeals decision tonight to Common Police Court. For that purpose, if that were to happen, our record, the testimony here would form a record for that proceeding in court. Therefore, anybody who wants to speak either for or against the variance request tonight has to take an oath to that they will testify truthfully. So I would ask anybody who plans on speaking for or against the variance request tonight to please raise your right hand.
Jason, just one question. This is Diane Citrino. I'm the attorney representing Dan Rich LLC. And I do plan to speak, but I was not planning to take an oath as I am an attorney.
No, if you're speaking in a representative capacity, you do not need to swear an oath.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you, Jason.
Sure.
But there are two witnesses here who will take the oath.
Okay, so I would ask those two individuals then to please raise your right hand. And do you swear or affirm that the statements you're about to give are the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You may have to unmute yourselves. I don't see any, you guys.
I do.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Scott.
Kristen, can you unmute yourself?
Okay, yes, I do. Sorry.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Yeah, Jason, I didn't see Rich raise his right hand. Are we still swearing in township staff for?
No, no, Rich would not get sworn in. Just witnesses. So, okay, Dave, it looks like everybody's sworn in. Back to you. If anybody else jumps on in midstream, I can swear them in, but it looks like we're good to go.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Okay. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. We just have one case on the docket for this evening. It's case 20-BZA-29, which is a use variance. So Rachel, could you read this into the record, please?
Okay. Applicant Dan Rich LLC filed a variance application for property located at 206 Hawthorne Drive. The request is to allow five persons unrelated by blood or marriage to reside on the property until termination of the rental lease in the summer of 2021 in violation of section 14.01 and 5.65, which requires that a single family home may not be occupied by a group of more than four persons unrelated by blood or marriage living as a single housekeeping unit.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Okay, I see no error in the zoning inspector requiring that the case come forward to us as a use variance. So with that, is there somebody on the call that would like to speak in favor of the variance?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Anzera. My name is Diane Citrino, C-I-T-R-I-N-O. I'm in Dan Rich LLC, the owner and manager of this five-bedroom, two-bathroom house at 206 Hawthorne Drive. Our request for a variance is because there will be a severe hardship if the variance is not granted. We are asking that the five students, college-age men who are living there be allowed to remain until May when students, so that they can remain as tenants. They are very COVID. They are on a sports team where they're very restricted in who they can interact with. This is their home. They have, they care deeply about staying together and being able to live there. And it would be an extreme hardship for them to find alternative housing for one of these closely knit group during this pandemic. They just cannot imagine being able to do that. There, this is an almost 2,000-square-foot house. It will not be any kind of challenge in terms of space there. I know there has been a parking concern. They have, since that's been raised and I've gotten involved, they have reconfigured how they park so that they park way in the back and don't infringe on the right-of-way. They're, they are really, we have here one of the young men as witness. If you have questions, but there's not a place for anyone to go. We anticipate the parking situation will be alleviated. I may, and we're just asking, you know, the owner's representative, Kristen, is here as well. And she, the owner and manager is absolutely committed that after this lease ends, there will be only four people there. But we are just asking that, given these unusual and unprecedented times, that these five student athletes be allowed to remain, even though it, the ordinance suggests that five is one too many.
Okay, thank you. So anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the request?
Would you like to hear from one of the, from the student? Or we did submit five statements by the young men? If you had any questions?
We may. I wanted to, yeah, we do have the statements as well in our records. So thank you for that. I wanted to first ask if there are any other witnesses who wanted to speak in favor, and then we will have some questions.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, before I take questions from the board, I'd like to ask, is there anyone on the line to speak against the request?
I'm sorry, can you please repeat the question?
Yeah, I'm asking if there's anyone on the call. This is the Painesville Township Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting. Anyone on the call that would like to speak? If they have anything they want to speak either for or against the cases before us, which is for a use variance?
Jason, I think you may need to swear this person in.
Yeah, I was waiting to see if she is planning on speaking for or against, or if she's just listening in.
No, I plan on speaking against. My name is Lori DePinto.
Okay, Lori. Well, before you speak then, I'm gonna have to go ahead and get you sworn in. As I explained earlier, decisions here tonight will be appealed to, in this case, it'd be Lake County Common Police Court. So we need to try to create an accurate record here tonight and need to ensure that all the testimony given is true. So if you would please raise your right hand. And do you swear or affirm that the statements you're about to give are the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Yes, so Lori, would you care to adjust the board?
Yes, I would. I'm trying to think, because there was one thing that the woman who was for the boys staying there said something, and it clicked, but I don't care if they're athletes and, you know, they, I don't know what kind of sworn statements they have. However, I live right next door to these five young men. We, at our house, have experienced what I would call a frat party with at least 50 people in their backyard, none of them wearing masks, drinking, I don't know if all of them are over 21. They were urinating on my house during a party. It's like every weekend is a frat party there because they have females and males. And it's just, they have loud music that I can hear in my living room over my TV being on. And my first room next to the house there is my kitchen. So we're talking two rooms into my house that I can hear their music. They have parked on our front lawn before. When my daughter went over there next door to the boys and asked them if they would please move their car, they slammed the door in her face. We ended up calling the police to get their car off of our property. The police are there every time they have a party. What else was there, Bree? I can't remember everything that I wrote to Rich, all of the different items that, you know, I had written to him, because those are true also. Trying to think what else.
This is a residential.
Yeah, this is a residential neighborhood. There are older people that live here. There are young kids that live here. I live here with my three grandchildren. And when there's parties, it disrupts their sleep. And two of them are autistic, which means they have to stay on a set schedule. If they're thrown off their schedule, their whole world is like turned upside down. So by them having music, having parties, having them stand in front of my kitchen window, talking, laughing at 2:00 in the morning. We're not talking about parties ending at 10:00. I've just, like, I had it with them next door.
Okay, thank you, Lori, for that. Is there anyone else on the call before we open up for questions that are to speak against the request? Okay, before we take questions, I just wanted to go over something as a board member in terms of, since this is a use variance, I think it's important to review what we call the Duncan factors in terms of when Boards of Zoning Appeals were to take a look at pertinent issues to a use variance, things that need to be factored into the consideration in terms of what is a reasonable decision for a use variance. So a use variance is granted only upon the finding of an unnecessary hardship, which general means that the property owner cannot make any economically viable use of the property under the current zoning restrictions. So a use variance means exactly a use of property. There are seven Duncan factors that come into play. So I'd like to just go over each of those very quickly. These are the things that the Board of Zoning Appeals would consider in terms of whether of a reasonable response. The first factor is the variance request stems from a condition which is unique to the property at issue and not ordinarily found in the same zone or district. One. The second is the hardship condition is not created by actions of the applicant. Three, the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent owners. Fourth, the granting of the variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or general welfare. Fifth, the variance will be consistent with the general spirit and the intent of the zoning code. In this case, it's zoned R1 residential. The variance, number six, the variance sought is the minimum which will afford relief to the applicant. And number seven, there is no other economically viable use which is permitted in the zoning district. So those are the seven Duncan factors that come into play. So I just wanted to read those into the record. Okay, I'm gonna open up for questions. So questions from any of the zoning appeals board members?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Counsel for the individual requesting the variance or the conditional use mentioned the hardship at COVID, which I totally understand. My only question that I'm trying to think about in my mind is the hardship was actually created by the applicant by permitting five individuals that are not by blood to live in the home. And so I'm hoping maybe, Mr. Chairman, you might be able to share some clarity on that, but that's how I'm seeing the hardship versus what counsel has presented as the hardship in this case. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Rich, do you want to weigh in on that?
I forgot to unmute myself. Technically, I had the same concern. In terms of the Duncan factors, the rental agent was responsible for renting to five tenants who are unrelated by blood or marriage. And that's, that's the only thing I can say. I mean, that fact is obvious to me.
Yes, if I could, this is Diane Citrino. If I could address the question also. We certainly recognize that ignorance of the law is no excuse. However, this was a new owner to the community. It is a very large house with five bedrooms and two bathrooms, and they did not realize that they had a restriction, the blood or marriage issue. And they certainly are going to comply with that. It's the hardship that we have focused on is on the tenants who are, you know, innocent in terms of not, not, it's not their fault that the housing provider made this error. And they are in this situation. It's something that, at this point, you know, if they were related, if these were, you know, a, if two of the people were a couple who were married to one another, or there were two brothers here, this would not fall outside of your ordinance. And so it's not any kind of overcrowding. And I would note, certainly, I are, I have not heard facts as brought forward by Ms. DePinto before this evening. My understanding was there were not any issues where there were large parties. That would be something that is outside of whether these young men are related or not. So if these were five brothers living there, obviously, they should not be having parties that disturb the neighbors. But that doesn't mean the variance should not be granted. I mean, the variance is not based on the number of people. It's based on whether they're related by blood or marriage. So the fact that if they're poor neighbors, the police should be called, or they should be strictly warned that they cannot do that. But, but don't make one of them homeless. That's the point of this variance, this use variance. Equity is to try and, this is a zoned residential area. Again, if these were five brothers living there, it would not be any, any different in terms of the use. So what we're trying to say is just until May, allow them to live there. If you want to put absolute restrictions on them, my understanding is they're not going to be having any kind of parties, anything like that at all. They are very concerned about COVID, and they're under strict orders from their coach and have to get COVID tests on a regular basis. They cannot have those kinds of parties. I'm not sure when they were, but they're not gonna happen in the future. And the other aspects of calling the police, I mean, that's perfectly appropriate if they're disturbing the peace. But my, I've got Scott on this call. He has assured me that's not happening. And it will not happen in the future if this variance is allowed to go forward.
Okay. Other questions from any of the members, any of those zoning appeal board members?
Mr. Chairman, I hate to steal the time, but I do have one other question, and it's specifically related to the parking. And although, as counsel has mentioned, if these were five family members, then it wouldn't be an issue specifically. However, one of the things we have to look at is that, as Mr. Chairman mentioned through the Duncan factors, is that it doesn't adversely affect surrounding neighbors, et cetera. And so it's my understanding that there is a challenge with parking and that the owner has agreed to expand that by 10%. My only concern is 10%, if I'm, if I read the maps and everything correctly, is roughly 20 by 2, I think. So it didn't look like enough for a vehicle. And I guess my only concern is that a fifth vehicle still can't park there in the driveway. And so I don't know if you can address that or not, or if there's anyone on the line that can share information on that.
Yes, we were concerned about that. So we went back and they, the young men there did go ahead and re, they were not parking in the back where there was some available spots. So they, they prefer to park closer so they can get out more easily, but they can, they can reconfigure it and park back there and fit the cars.
And I would like to say something. This is Kristen, the property manager. What Diane just said is correct. They found a different way to park, so that parking is not an issue. And they are actually out, they're actually not even at the house from now until January 20th, I believe Scott said. So for the next month, there's no issues there. So we're basically just asking for this variance for four months maximum. And what Diane said was the main variance we're asking here is just to allow the five gentlemen to reside in the house until May. And with that being said, what Diane said as well is we will maintain the parking situation. And also what Diane said, I was unaware of any parties or anything, but I do believe that's a separate issue. And if that is an issue at hand, we can handle that separately because that shouldn't be taking place regardless of if it's five family members or five friends. So we should, I'm just reiterating what Diane said about it being just these brief four months, letting these residents continue their lease. That was an error on our fault. But we were just, we're just asking this for this short period of time, and then we will be able to comply with the four maximum.
Thank you.
I want to, I have a letter from the Painesville Township Board, from the trustees, that I wanted to read into the record as well and then open up for more questions. So we do have a letter from the, from the three trustees dated December 3rd, 2020. And it's to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And it says, "We've been made aware of a variance request related to conditions at the property known as 206 Hawthorne Drive that have resulted in numerous complaints made to the township trustees, the Lake County Sheriff's Office, the township zoning staff, and the township administrator. Should the board decide to grant this variance request and permit five unrelated individuals to reside at the property, the complaints will undoubtedly continue." So it's basically the gist of the letter expressing concerns from the trustees based on the number of calls and complaints that have been reported by the individuals mentioned. So I want to make sure all the other trustees have or uncopy that letter. You see that? I had a question, Diane, it'll be for you, Diane. You mentioned you're asking the request to May. Is it May 1st? Is it May 31st? What's the date that you're looking for?
Yeah, we're looking for May 31st to allow them there. That's, I believe, when school ends. Is that correct, Scott?
Yes, that is.
I have a question for Rich or for our legal counsel, Jason. If the board does not grant the variance, then what is, what are the, what is the recourse for the township in terms of the five individuals? How does that work?
Mr. Chairman, it's Rich Constantine, the zoning inspector. Typically, that would call for an enforcement action, which would call for us to issue an order from the zoning office to cease and desist from violating the zoning resolution. And if that is not followed within a reasonable time, we would be compelled to pursue this matter in local court as a zoning violation.
Thank you, Rich. Jason, do you want to add anything to that?
No, that would be the gist of it. You know, essentially, I think our standard procedure is we send a letter to the property owner, letting him know of the zoning violation, give him a deadline to address it by, you know, and eventually, if compliance isn't had, then yeah, it ends up in a complaint in Painesville Municipal Court.
May I speak for a second? You know, this is a very sobering call for the tenants and for the property manager. I mean, what we would appreciate is what we would appreciate is, you know, we, we would certainly want to be available to any residents who had a problem. I don't know if the complaints extend beyond Ms. DePinto. I certainly don't want to trivialize what she has described, which sounds very stressful. But perhaps she could be aware that this is a very responsible property manager and owner, and they certainly would take strict actions to monitor any tenants of theirs. But again, this doesn't go to the zoning violation in that if the, if two of these five men were brothers, that this would not be a violation. It's a separate issue.
Thank you, thank you. I did want to note, we do have another note from a resident, an email that was forwarded to us, Bonnie Hayden, that also expresses concern about the situation across the street.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Other questions or comment? Rich, do you want any, anything else you want? We need to be aware of, wanted to weigh in on this?
Well, I, I'm, I'm just curious, I mean, for myself and for the whole board and for everybody's edification. Diane, are, are you familiar or Kristen? Are you, are you familiar with when Dan Rich LLC took ownership of this subject property?
I don't have the exact date of when we took ownership. Prior to these gentlemen living there, a family was there. So.
Okay, could that have been as early as 2016?
Yes.
Okay, and, and a actual family, which was, I'm not sure what you call that. A typical or usual family with some kind of a parent and children occupied the premises? And we did, we did file or, or communicate with the property owner that there was a zoning issue on the property and the property owner did get their tenant at that time to take care of the problem. And we have had no contact since until the recent complaints began surfacing regarding the tenancy of the five guys who are there now. Is that correct?
As far as I know, yes, that's correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to give everybody some historical perspective. Because it, it all comes into play somewhere along the line.
Just to add to the history on the property, the last zoning violation that took place, I'd have to look at my records, but I was the last one in communication with Dan Rich LLC regarding 206 Hawthorne, which I believe resulted in the eviction of the previous tenants. And then they had several broken windows and things and they ended up having to go in and rehab the property at that time. And then I believe the next tenants were these gentlemen immediately following.
Yes, that's correct.
Other questions? Anyone else want to weigh in?
No, 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 go ahead.
Well, I, I just wanted to ask maybe Mr. Constantine and Legal Counsel. While curfews and things like that are really up to the township and enforcement via the sheriff department. I'm just curious, because this is before the Board of Zoning Appeals and it is in violation. Are we able to put conditions on this approval with respect to noise ordinance, times, things like that, that we would a regular business? Are we able to do things like that? Or does it still have to fall within jurisdiction of the township at that point? That would be for Jason and Rich, please.
It would be my opinion, because we're talking about a variance request here. I, I don't think the board could attach conditions to it. You know, if this was a conditional use permit, you know, I think we'd be a different story. But a variance request is just simply their request to the variance from the zoning resolution. So, so it'd be my opinion that, that I don't think the board would have the authority to grant it with conditions.
Thank you.
I would. Oh God, I, I have to weigh in on this, but I don't really want to. I, I have attended a number of zoning seminars. And my understanding has been all along that it is perfectly appropriate for the Board of Zoning Appeals to place conditions upon a variance. That's all I can say.
And, and I would agree with the information. I've attended the same seminars as Rich and from my understanding, the board is that it, it is permissible for the board to place conditions on any requests received, whether it be variance or conditional use.
Thank you, Harley. And I would offer to the board as well, something to think about as you're making your own mind and decision. If we are able to put conditions on, the largest issue appears to be complaints from neighbors. Certainly it's a violation and that's why they're here for a variance. But at the same time, the largest issue that we have before us are complaints for the, from the neighbors. And so if we can put conditions on, I would ask the board to think about conditions that would support the enjoyment of the neighbor's property. And from what we've heard so far, in my own mind, I see that as a timing issue from a volume standpoint. And so to me, if we were to attach restrictions based on time, then while they're still enforced from the township, from a violation standpoint, what the township would do is come in and say you have to turn your volume down. If we in fact had conditions on this variance, to me, then as Rich mentioned, we could then execute a true cease and desist based on violation of our conditions. Does that make sense?
Yes, and this is Diane Zitrino on behalf of the, of the owner and manager. We would welcome such conditions. We think that would be within the sport's purview to do. And we have, we, we want to be a good neighbor. The tenants there want to comply. And if, if there's an issue, we understand the, the pressure that, that will be brought to bear. And, and we think it's appropriate in order to allow these young men to, to stay in their home. They would have to abide by and recognize that they have neighbors whose needs must be accommodated.
Yeah, if I could say something. It is a lease violation to disrupt your neighbor's peaceful enjoyment of the property. So we would be more than happy to enforce those rules as well. This is the first I'm hearing of that from the neighbor. So I heard about parking and I heard about five people in the house. And that's what the issue we are bringing to hand today is. But we are definitely more than happy to enforce that rule as we do at all of our houses, apartments and everything, so.
Okay, so thanks for those questions and, and responses. Rich, I have a question for you and or Jason. So if we were to if we were to approve this variance request with specific conditions that we apply, and if the tenant or the residents do not abide by the conditions, then what's the recourse to the township? What, what is the action that can be taken?
I, I would imagine that as we accumulate information and or evidence that the conditions are not being observed, we would report that to the Board of Zoning Appeals and it would be your decision on what course of action to take with an eye toward rescinding or, or avoiding the variance. That's, that's my own take, but I'm going to yield to Jason.
By, by statute, I think the recourse would be rescinding the variance. If it was violated or if the conditions placed on it were violated, the board could hold a hearing to rescind the variance.
So, so to clarify then, so it would be up to the Board of Zoning Appeals to rescind if, if, if we so chose to do that. And we would do that at either a regularly scheduled board meeting or a special meeting for that matter if we decided to call it. Is that correct?
I, I believe so.
Yeah, it would, I mean, it certainly would be up to the board whether to rescind it. So essentially, the board would have to issue notice to the variance holder. And then the holder would have a right to a hearing before the board within 30 days of the mailing of the notice. So if that hearing is to be held, the board sets a time and a place for it. So as long as it's within the 30 days of the notice, you know, it could be a regular meeting, it could be a special meeting.
Okay. So to summarize, and then I'm going to ask for any other questions before I'm going to ask for motion. So, so the understanding is that we are able to place conditions on the the use variance if we so chose to do that. And it is within our authority to rescind that if in fact we make a determination that those conditions are not being followed. And that, that would be our purview. And then, and the applicant is stating that, that this use variance would, it would, they're asking for it through the end of May, after which it would no longer be valid. That's, that's, is my, my summary there accurate? Rich?
Mr. Chairman, that is the way I heard the testimony this evening. That is not how it was presented in writing. There was no specified end date to this variance in writing. But I, I do recall hearing that counsel for the applicant referred to the end of May, which I take as May 31st, as being the end of any variance which might be granted under this application.
Okay. So the question is, if we so chose to, to act, you know, put a, put a deadline on it, are we able to do that this evening or continue this meeting until the next meeting? And then ask for clarification? Or I just want to make sure from a legal point of view, what's, what's the protocol? Jason?
I'm sorry, the protocol for, for what exactly? My apologies.
The original variance, or the, the application we have in front of us does not make any mention of a deadline. It's pretty, it says into the summer. I think one of the students' letters says after, you know, graduation. But there's no specific deadline date requested. And so if we were, so if the board so choose, chose to put a deadline on, on it as one of the conditions tonight, are we able to do that? Or is it, or does the applicant need to revise their use variance application, in which case we would have to come back to this at our next meeting?
No, I, I think the board would be perfectly within its powers to put its own deadline on it. You know, even if they asked for a, a permanent variance, you know, the board could decide to grant a temporary one. So I think it'd be fine to, to put a deadline of May 31st or whatever the, I think May 31st was the date. But no, to some, I don't think an amended application would have to be filed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the, from the board?
Just a comment, Dave. I, I just want to remind the board members, you were good enough to go through the Duncan factors. I think those should be, everyone should have those in mind. Make sure that we're, we're looking at those as we make whatever decisions we're going to make tonight.
Okay, very good. So just an observation, a comment from myself. I see there's three different options here, just to throw it out. One is to you know, approve, approve this with some sort of conditions. The other is to deny it, but then potentially to deny it with the understand, or to not to, to, to provide some type of reasonable time when this would take effect so that one of the students is able to find other, another place. So in other words, you could make it a, we could, we could state that, you know, we would have this the, the, the variance would be in place through, say, the end of January, which is 45 days. That's another option. Or the, the other option is just to, you know, to deny the request. Randy, did you, in terms, what I'm going to need is, I'm going to need somebody, one of the, one of our trust, one of our board members to make a motion and to make a motion whichever way you want to make it. And if you want to include conditions, then do that and then we will act upon the motion. But before I do that, any other questions, comments from anyone?
Dave, this is Dave.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I have something else to say. This is Lori, this is Lori DePinto again. One thing I do agree on with Diane is that I don't want to see the boys homeless either. However, it's affecting my life. It's affecting my daughter's and my grandchildren's lives. Okay, they, we have called the police many, many times on them. And we were told by the deputies that there's nothing that they can do. So here are my questions. If you're thinking of putting conditions on, am I going to get a copy of these conditions? So if there is another party or if there is a parking violation that I know, you know, that yes, they're not complying with the conditions. And then who do I call? Does someone from the board want me to call them at 1:00 in the morning? When they're screaming and yelling and swearing outside my window?
Thanks for your questions. So the first question is, is would you get a copy? And the answer is yes, that's a public document. So you would have, have that availability. And the second question is, you would contact your local law, you would contact the sheriff's office and then we would be, we would be made of it, we would have access to, to that, to that call and the, the report of call. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I, I have a question for you then. If, so the board does have the authority, as we determined this evening, to put conditions on. And the board, in our, in our judgment, if we feel those conditions are not being met, then we have the authority to rescind the variance and then it's disapproved. In which case the township is able to pursue legal action against the property owner. So my question is to you, Mrs. On the, am I talking to, is that Bonnie? Who, who's, who's?
No, Lori DePinto.
Oh Lori, I'm sorry. Yeah, Lori, so how would you feel? I appreciate the comment you made about, you know, we don't, you know, we want to do the reasonable thing in, in, in a situation of COVID. You know, that's a challenge for You know, that's a challenge for many, many folks. How would you feel if the board were to put very specific conditions such as the, the excess noise, the partying, the parking that's currently occurring on the front lawn and on the street? Uh, if we were to put conditions that all of those things needed to be taken care of, with the understanding that if they're not taken care of, then we have the ability to rescind, rescind the, the, the variance. How, how would you feel about that?
I think we need to talk to Bonnie too. Um, I would be okay, like, right now, none of them are there, and I am like, the most calm I've been, you know, we've lived here twelve years, so this has been the most calm I've been in my life. I just wanna make sure that, you know, I don't know, like, how much the, well, the deputy already told me, there's nothing that they can do. They can't shut down the party, they can't ask people to leave, they can't check IDs, you know, that type of thing. So I, I don't have faith in that. Um, I would have faith in the board, but I just wanna make sure, is it after one time? You know, something would be done, is it two times? Is it, because right now, well, not right now, but when they were still here, they're still parking on the front lawn. And if you come and see, you could see the deep grooves from them getting stuck in it many times.
Right, yeah, well, some of us, I, I did drive by, I, I saw the space that you, referring to, thank you. And, um, I can't, I cannot be, it, what I can say in answer to your other question, it would be up to the board's judgment based on the, what we, what this, you know, what, what transpires after we were to pass this with conditions, we would make that determination based on looking at the case in the end.
Okay, so you would get the information that there was a violation, I guess, is what, you know, someone said? If, uh, like, one of the conditions, if they went against one of the conditions, and I happen to call the police, just say, this is all hypothetical, they were having a party, it was very loud, it was very late in the, in the night, the police show up, they don't do anything about it. You or the board will get notice from the police department, deputies that they were called, and, you know, there is a violation of this, uh, variance?
Uh, the answer is yes.
Okay, and Kristen, I just wanna say too, I didn't know that there was, uh, someone who took care of the house, because I would have been more than happy to call you every time something happened.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I just wanna speak, um, for the enforcement side of things. What I would suggest for the neighbors is to make the initial call to the sheriff's department at the time that the disturbance is happening, and then follow up that call the following day to either Rich or myself at Township Hall. Um, and then we will, we will follow the process to ensure the board's notified in obtaining the evidence from the sheriff's department. Um, you know, we can't always guarantee that the sheriff's department will reach out to us. They're, they're busy, things get buried, so we would make it our responsibility to reach out to the sheriff's department and obtain any evidence of, of that report, um, and, and make the board aware. So Lori, you, or Bonnie, or, or whomever, um, in the neighborhood, is, is the caller, um, to the sheriff's department regarding a disturbance, uh, just follow up that phone call to Township Hall, um, and communicate with either myself or Rich.
Would be my. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Rich, would you be able to send me the phone number to, uh, back, um, in the email? So I know, like, who directly, like, you know, their line or their extension or whatever that I would follow up with?
Um, you mean in the township offices?
Yeah, like, you know, they're, they're.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's easy.
Um. You think I give you something hard to do, Rich?
No, I, I, uh, you know, you and I had an email exchange a couple days ago, or, you know, yesterday or something. And, and the Township Hall phone number is, is on my email, like, signature line.
Okay.
You know, and there's only one phone number, and when you call in, you ask for zoning.
Okay.
Any, anyhow, um, there, you know, guys, this is like such a complicated issue. Um, just to, like, share my thinking. Um. I expect there is great potential for some repeat performances uh, of certain violations, as, as far as parking, uh, violations of the noise resolution, violations of the parking resolution, the violation of the zoning resolution, as it pertains to proper parking spaces, not being on grass, but on, on a approved driveway surface, whether it was a pre-existing non-conforming surface, or if it's a totally conforming surface. Uh, we're, we're probably, doesn't matter if there are four unrelated guys there, or five unrelated guys. Uh, the fact is that each unrelated guy who inhabits that property is posing some potential. He certainly has a car, being an adult, and, and he certainly has friends who he would like to invite over periodically for social interaction. Uh, hopefully, under COVID circumstances. It's not our job to monitor who is following State of Ohio COVID rules. That's up to the sheriff's department and law enforcement. But, you know, these are strange times we're living in. Um. I, I, I have difficulty, I mean, the intent of our zoning resolution always has been, for a long time now, that no more than four unrelated people can form a household unit, a single-family housekeeping unit. Now, to, to grant a variance means that we think there's a special circumstances that, uh, due to this unique property and unique situation. Why? Because a house has five bedrooms? I know a lot of houses that have five bedrooms and four bedrooms, and there's only two adults living in the house. Um, so, I, I, I don't know what is unique about this, I, I don't know what would be a compelling reason to ignore the Duncan factors. This situation meets almost none of them, the way I'm, I'm kinda looking at this factor, but I've been an attorney. So on one hand, do I wanna deprive one guy of what he thinks has been an ideal lifestyle? Living in a semi-frat house, and free to park where he wants, and do whatever, invite whoever over, and shut, slam the door in neighbors' faces, from what I heard from neighbors? Um, or do I wanna limit that and preserve the intent of the zoning resolution? And say, no, four is the limit. Uh, there's no justifiable reason why these five guys ever were rented the place in the first place. And, uh, let's do something reasonable, like, just to be good-hearted guys. Let's preserve the zoning resolution and issue a more temporary variance than what's even being asked for, to try to allow somebody to find a better living quarters. Um. You know, COVID has been going on, uh, for well over six months now. Well over six months, and, and people have been aware of it. And, um, I, I haven't heard anybody describe the partygoers, or people going into the house, putting masks on, people coming out of the house, taking masks off. So if COVID is the reason for somebody not wanting to move, I'm asking the question, really? Um, what has historically happened on that property to give evidence that COVID's a real concern to any of these guys, uh, who are living on the property? So it, this is, this, this is tough. I mean, you know, I, when I was in college, I lived in a frat house, and, you know, I, I, I know all about the good experiences, if, and maybe some of the bad that goes along with that. Um, and, and I, I could appreciate these guys are all members of a team, and there's something about team camaraderie and, and everything, but I, I'm just not sure that anything that's going on, on this property uh, justifies throwing away and, and, or preserving the intent and the spirit of how we have constructed and, and enforced our zoning resolution for a number of years now. I, I'm just, just not sure that that's the ground we need to tread.
Oh, I didn't mean to cut you off, excuse me.
That's okay, Diane.
Um, I, I appreciate your view, Richard, and I know this is the ordinance. Um, everyone is sworn to uphold, and, uh, but I'm, I am saying this is an extraordinary time. I would like to, uh, allow Scott Furneld, who's on this call, who I have spoken to in the past, who, um, has been a very responsible, uh, person, if he's, um, able to speak for a minute. But I think there are some strong reasons why, um, I, I mean, four, even if four individuals are there, they're not allowed to misbehave. Um, having the variance would allow, uh, kind of a, a, I think what the neighbors want is a quiet place to live, and certainly with the threat of, you know, you guys are gonna be out of there in a second, um, with, with a zoning, um, variance like that, it, it's a much more powerful, um, restraint. And, and certainly, we are hearing that, that we, we are learning of some issues that we haven't heard. But I'd like to have the perspective of Scott, who's living there, who has not, um, had a chance to speak up, and in, 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 I don't think he views this as a frat house. I think he's, these are serious students, they're graduate students, some of them, and they care about the community, and they, it would be a, a terrible hardship. Um, Scott, for example, is in California, and he's not planning to be back in Ohio until, um, middle of January. Um, Scott, can you speak up?
Yeah, hi. Um, first of all, I'd like to apologize for any inconvenience to my neighbor. We have never been told by her that it was a problem. Um, we actually have a great relationship with our other adjacent neighbor, and they say we're good neighbors, at least. Um, also, with regards to the sheriff coming, they said they didn't cite us because our noise was okay, so, I don't know, maybe, maybe it's a different, we all have different perspectives on noise, so I understand, and I don't wanna cause her any disruption. So we'll work to fix that in the future. But, um, the COVID concern, I know that was a topic we just discussed. The problem with that is that we actually have to live with our teammates. So we all play baseball at Lake Erie College, and the five of us are all on the same team. And the only reason we have five this year, 'cause we lived in the, I've lived in the house since last year. The only reason we have five this year is 'cause none of us could work our summer jobs with COVID, because we don't have your, you know, um, I don't remember what they call them, the essential jobs. None of us really worked those at this point in our lives. So we had to bring in the fifth roommate, because we couldn't really afford our rent, we had the extra bedroom. Plus, it was unexpected and late that we accepted a fifth, because last year, we lost our season due to COVID, and that gained people who would have graduated last year's NCAA eligibility back. So there's, two of our roommates came back because they had that extra year. So they asked if they could live with us, and we had the extra bed, one of them was the one that decided late, asked if he could live with us. And we had the extra bedroom, so we asked our, you know, landlord, and we didn't know about the law about four people, or five people not from the same blood or marriage, so. I apologize for any inconvenience, and I, I understand the parking thing was an issue, and we have worked to resolve that. I've been talking to my roommates about it the whole time. We're gonna fix that, we don't wanna make anyone mad. And, um, we have worked on it.
Scott, if I could ask you a question, what about the comment, the, the, the issue about late night partying at two AM in the morning and excessive noise?
Um, well, I've never felt that our late night, we, we had some gatherings earlier on in the semester, early when we just got back before our season started, and I'm aware of that. But we didn't have any citations, so I never thought any were a problem. Plus, the fact is, that's really has to stop anyway, because we're gonna be in season. Most of the time, we're not even gonna be there, because we're gonna be on the road playing games. So I don't think this would be an issue. We have to get our COVID test, so we really don't have anyone over besides our own teammates.
Okay.
But, um, if I've been made aware of the issue now, and we will work to resolve that.
I have, I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Scott, I want to.
Again.
I, I have a question, Scott's probably gonna be the best one to answer it. How many people are living as of today in that house?
Zero currently. We're all home due to winter break slash, we were supposed to go home anyway, 'cause, you know, we left, uh, right before Thanksgiving.
When will you guys be back?
Um, anywhere in a range of about January fifteenth to the nineteenth, people start coming back, 'cause we start school the twentieth.
Okay, so in effect, should things not work out tonight for you, that person would have the better part of five or six weeks to find alternative housing?
Um, I, that, that is understood, but it would be hard for someone to find a six-month or less lease, and we have to live together, which is another issue, we have to live with teammates, and we don't have other teammates with houses that can take on another roommate. But, um, if it weren't to work out, it would be really hard for someone to try and find another living situation during a pandemic, where you would look for a roommate and find an apartment or home to live in. Plus, none of us are in the area and don't have other people they could reach out to and live. I mean, our closest roommate lives four hours away.
Your, your coaches at Lake Erie College are not gonna assist people in finding?
They are not involved in getting our housing done for us, that's on our own. That doesn't fall into our scholarship or schooling.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Harley, I just wanted to add, I am currently speaking with Bonnie, the neighbor across the street in the, um, livestream chat box. Uh, she's having some difficulty, she says she's, she's got some comments, but I'm not sure at this time if they're, they're gonna make it to the board. She's having difficulty connecting, um, to the meeting, and so I'm, I let her know that if she'd like to type her comments in the comment section of the livestream, I can relay them to the board, or she could send them to me via email. Um, and I am waiting on her response at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I have a question, this is Lori DePinto again. Um, why, okay, we wanna do this to keep those five teammates, but if the coaches aren't involved with the housing, why do these five teammates have to live together? That's question one for Scott. Um, uh, somebody made a comment about, you know, making it easier for them and everything. What about my life? When is my life gonna be better? Because they don't wear masks, and they have females and males over, and none of them that I have seen have ever worn a mask.
Um, well, the coaching comment, uh, I can answer that, because they're not responsible for finding us housing, but they do tell us to live with our teammates, so we're not exposed to others. Also, the people that come over are our teammates. I mean, with exception to girls, they're probably someone's girlfriend. And the mask thing, I mean, we wear masks when we practice, we wear masks when we're around school. But if it's the people we live with and the people we interact with every day, we don't feel the need to wear a mask because it's, we're interacting with them anyway. And I mean, there's really, I mean, some people say the masks work, some say they don't. So I don't, I don't know about the mask thing.
I, I know. It's not for us to determine if it works or not. That is more or less what the governor is saying, that we have to wear them. And Scott, you, I don't know if it was you, but there have been at least 50 people at a party at your house. You're not going to tell me that all of them are on your team.
I disagree with the amount you just said respectfully, but I don't think that's true. And also the governor comment regards to when we're at school or when we're in stores in public places, not our own home for masks.
Right. I don't expect the five of you to wear masks in the house. But when you have, I mean, I know that there were at least 50 people. That's why I had people parking on my front lawn. And we did go over there to your house and explain that, you know, that car shouldn't be there. You need to move it. And the door was slammed in my daughter's face.
I'm very sorry about that.
You were made aware, I'm sorry, you were made aware that, you know, we have issues. By us calling the police all the time, that should have given you guys a clue that, you know, there's problems and we don't like the loud music at like 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning. Even if it's, I've heard the music start at like 10:00 in the morning and go all the way to like 2:00.
The car, first of all, I apologize for your daughter having a door slammed in her face. I was not the one that did that and was not talked to about that, so I, I might not have been home. I honestly have no idea about that incident. So I really apologize for that. But the police that we have talked to have never had an issue, never cited us and never, and also they don't tell you who has the issue. So we did not know and we talked to our other next door neighbor and they said they've never heard us late at night and never have had a problem with us. So I didn't know it was happening or I didn't know it was you guys calling because they can't, I don't think they're legally allowed to tell us, honestly.
No, they ask if we want to leave our name or not. We choose not to, only because I don't want to make, you know, trouble and then repercussions happen. I mean, I'm not saying you guys would. I'm just saying, you know, I'm trying to protect my family here too. I'm not the only one that calls the police. Bonnie calls the police and so does the neighbor behind me. I don't know if you have any comments from him. But just because you don't get a citation, Scott, does that make, does that mean that you think your parties are fine? Plus, when we call the police, the music is very loud, but by the time they get here, you guys turn it down.
Look, I'm not trying to justify anything or.
Yeah, I want to let, let them finish. Okay, Scott, thank you, Ken. Yeah, so I want to help, help to the discussion. Lori, I appreciate the comments. Thank you for that. Scott, I appreciate your perspectives as well. Thank you for that. But now it's, I think it's time to come to a decision. I can't make a motion as the, as the vice chair. I need one of the others to make a motion. But it seems to me, I'll make a comment that, that, again, if you, if you go by the Duncan factors, as Ken mentioned, they're pretty clear. Okay, so I agree with the fact that as you go through the Duncan factors, it's hard to make a compelling case that there's a, there's a, there's a reasonable deviation from the Duncan factors. That said, we also want to do the reasonable thing because these are very difficult and challenging times. So we want to do the right thing. At the same time, protecting the integrity of the zoning laws and the spirit of the laws and, and, and our responsibilities to our neighbors. So to me, I, I can see a case being made for not granting. I can also see a case for granting it with some kind of temporary extension like Richard suggested. And it would be up to the board's purty to decide how long that temporary approval would last for. So those are my comments.
Chairman, Dave Lindros here. I have a question. So May 31st, does that mean that everyone is going to be moving out of the house? Or are people staying? What's, what's going on with that?
Three of our roommates are graduating, so they would be leaving.
So three are leaving, two are staying.
And I would be one of the people staying.
Okay, now you would stay and then what about any others moving in as that? Because if you can't survive with five.
We would comply to the four. Well, we'll be able to work a little more. I assume this summer ideally that COVID will calm down and we'll be able to find jobs that we can then go back to affording the rent with four roommates.
So it's going to, I mean, if we were to grant this till May 31st with five roommates, after the three move out, you're going to have two more move in, is what you're planning. So it's, it's going to consist, so it's going to be pretty much for Lake Erie College housing almost to where it's, it is somewhat of that usage. But, okay, that's really my only question.
Well, something for the board to consider is along those lines since Mr. Lindros brought it up. As one individual moves out, regardless of whether there are parties, where the parking is, all those sorts of things, if there are four people in the house, then they are compliant with our resolution, with the township resolution. So just keep that in mind when you think about any kind of voter or conditions as well.
And Scott, a question for you. Is May 31st the earliest that you would get down to four? Is there, is there an earlier date?
It kind of depends on how well our season goes because we could go into the playoffs. Now, we'd be on the road for that, but we could go into the playoffs. But graduation is May 1st, I believe. So it kind of depends on when people would leave and get their stuff. But May 31st would be the latest for five at least.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments before I ask for a board, one of our board to make a motion?
Question.
I was just going to comment off of David asking about adding the four more. Their, their current lease goes until the end of July. So that would be up for discussion with them as well, come July 31st.
Yeah, comment, though regardless of what the lease says, our board has the ability to put a date when you're, when this temporary use would go out of effect. It can be anytime between now and July.
Yeah, like last year, our lease went through July, but we, most of us leave when the school year has ended. So that wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, good. Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve case number 20BZ829 with the conditions of making sure we park in the driveway and not in other people's yard. And another condition being maybe no outside parties and that last until 10:00 PM. Does that sound fair? I don't, we, we usually will go through and kind of set conditions together to what we deem to be fair. I'm asking the rest of the board here to give any ideas about conditions that they feel that we should grant. Other than the parking and maybe a 10:00 PM limit to outdoor activities, I don't know.
Well, I think what I heard to add to that is excessive noise. And I also heard we have to pick a date by which the temporary use would go out of effect. So we have to specify dates.
Okay, well, another condition being excessive noise and the other condition being that it would be until May 31st of 2021.
Are there any other conditions before I ask for a second on this that we would want to apply? Randy?
Chairman, I would just like to apply, even though it's a township authority and control, I would like to apply that any violation of township resolution may result in immediate reversal of the approval of this variant.
Okay. Anything else? Any other conditions? Okay, do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Rachel, before I call for a vote, can you read those conditions again just so we're all clear?
Okay, parking in the driveway, no outside parties after 10:00 PM, excessive noise, and then was it May 31st or May 1st?
31st.
31st, okay. And then May 31st, 2021 for the end date for this.
David, would you also care, I think I also heard about parking on the front lawn, parking in the right of way? Those are issues that have been raised as well. So you might want, I'm just suggesting you might want to consider that in there as well.
Mr. Chairman, hold on. The parking on the front lawn is covered. That is a zoning violation. Parking in the road right of way is a parking resolution, has nothing to do with zoning. That is enforceable by the sheriff's department.
All right, thank you for that. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Any, any questions on the motion which has been seconded? Okay, Rachel, would you, go ahead.
Chairman, this is Harley. I was just wondering from an enforcement side, the excessive noise condition, could we maybe make that a little bit more clear? So then that way, if we are approached regarding excessive noise, we understand what that threshold is and when is appropriate to approach the board with concerns from the neighbors that might arise due to excessive noise? If that's a time or if it's a barrier, maybe, you know, passing property boundaries at specific times?
Well, I would say that that noise ordinance would have to be in compliance with our zoning resolution as we already have. Is that correct, Rich?
Not quite. That's why this, this is so complicated.
I know, it's a mess.
Haynesville Township has a zoning resolution. There's nothing in the zoning resolution that describes what kind of noise other than a general condition of being an annoyance to a person of normal sensitivities. We do have a standalone parking resolution, noise resolution, and curfew resolution, which are all enforced. Those three resolutions are enforced and their provisions are enforced by our law enforcement agency, which happens to be the Lake County Sheriff's Department. So in the case of parking in the road right of way, that is part of the parking resolution, has nothing really to do with the zoning resolution that's strictly enforced by the sheriff's department. Parking off of an approved driveway surface on a residential property is a zoning violation and we will and have prosecuted that kind of a violation. As far as the noise goes, that's a combination. The first, the first complaint has to go to the sheriff's department. If they order and put it in their report that they have ordered an individual household to cut down on the noise because they're too loud, we should be able to consider that also a violation of our zoning resolution, which says you can't produce noise as well as dust or fumes or gas and all that kind of stuff to be noxious or an annoyance to a person of normal sensitivities. So there's some inner relationship here and it gets a little bit tricky. But the idea is if somebody in the neighborhood is truly being bothered by the conduct of anybody else in the neighborhood, they should place a call to the sheriff's department and to the zoning office. And we, between the sheriff and us in the zoning office, we'll sort it out and decide what to do about it. I, I think that's the sensible way to approach this. And while I'm talking, Scott, do you play first base or are you a catcher?
I'm a catcher. Good guess.
So my, my thought is maybe the appropriate way to handle the excessive noise and the parking in the road right of way similar to the way Dave was addressing violations of the zoning ordinance, or was that Randy? One of you had made a condition regarding if, yeah, that was Randy, wasn't it? If, if they were to violate the zoning resolution, it would revolve in the revocation or, or the rescindance of the variants. So perhaps the way to handle the, and this is just a suggestion, is, is similar to that. If they violate our noise ordinance or our parking ordinance that is enforced by the sheriff's department, we would handle it similarly as we would a violation to our zoning violation.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. David, are you okay with that in your resolution, in your motion?
Yeah, I just, it's all about being mindful to your neighbors. And I think that from what I understand is they, they have a baseball season coming up and they will have to be on their better behavior. And I understand it's tough. I mean, you got, if one person moves out, where are they going to go? I understand that's difficult. I also understand the neighbors side on this to where this is, they've called the police multiple times before. It's, it's a tough, tough call, but this, I just be mindful to your neighbors. And if you follow these, these conditions, then I think that we could all kind of be okay with this. But this is, I mean, this is just making something in affirmative and we are going to vote on it. This is just, I'm just putting these conditions in, in place to where if one of them is broken, then that, this is kind of null and void.
Oh, and Dave, I'm glad you said that because we should remind Diane and Kristen and Scott that when the board makes a motion, it's always in the affirmative. And depending how each member votes and what, whatever the majority says rules. But the motions themselves are always constructed and crafted to be in the affirmative.
Yeah, thank you for that, Rich. Okay, so I'm going to ask Rachel one last time so it's all clear. Could you read, read the conditions for us before we ask for a vote?
Okay. To park in the driveway, no outside parties after 10:00 PM. I'm new at this, so I, I'm not sure to write down. So excessive noise, is that, did we change that?
I think it said excessive noise and violation of our zoning ordinances as determined by the, our zoning commission, by our zoning inspector.
Excessive noise violation.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I make a, make, make a suggestion to try to, you know, I think all the conditions we have here would be met if we just required at all times adherence to the parking resolution. I think all the conditions we have here would be met if we just required at all times adherence to the parking resolution. Adherence to the noise resolution, adherence to the zoning resolution. Um I think the only condition that we've discussed that wouldn't be included in those would be the no outside parties after ten P M. Um you know, with the end date of five thirty one twenty twenty one. Um you know, and I think if we did it with the stipulation that a violation of any of those. Parking noise, zoning or any other condition could result um in revocation of the variance.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification, Jason. I apologize, Rich. Yeah, Jason said it the way it needed to be said. Thank you. Okay, so um so we have a motion and it's been seconded. Uh Rachel, can you call the vote, please?
Okay, uh Randy?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just just so we're clear, um it'd probably be best if somebody. Kind of renewed the motion um with the specific conditions we just talked about, so everyone's on the same page and knows exactly what we're voting on here.
Okay.
Okay, I didn't I I didn't write everything down, but I think I've got it. So I make the motion to approve case number twenty B Z eight twenty nine with the conditions of. All of our zoning regulations as it appears to the parking, to noise ordinance. And also to be able to. End any party at ten P M. And this would take it, would be in effect until May thirty first twenty twenty one. Do I have everything?
Yeah, nothing.
Probably not quite. Um Rachel.
Yes.
Are you ready for this?
I'm trying to be.
Dave Lindros.
Yes.
Moved to approve a temporary use variance. As requested until with the following conditions. The variance ends on May thirty first two thousand twenty one.
Yes.
There will be strict adherence to the parking resolution. There will be strict adherence. To the noise resolution.
Yes.
There will be strict adherence to the zoning resolution.
Zoning resolution, okay.
No outside parties or gatherings will be held after ten P M.
After ten P M?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, that's what I had in my notes. Does that sound like what everybody remembers?
Yes.
Yep, I think you got it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that clarification, Rich and Rachel. Uh okay, um Rachel, would you uh be willing, please call the the vote, please?
Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Dave Inzera?
Yes.
Ken?
No.
Dave Lindros.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion is carried, the variance is granted with the conditions as stated through May thirty first. Um so I wanted to, I just make a comment that I think Dave Lindros's comments are on the mark here. Um we 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 expect the the decency and respect to to be treating each other the way we would want to be treated. Including our neighbors and so the conditions are are made very explicit in that regard. Um and given it is times of COVID and trying to do what's reasonable. The board has made that judgment as to reasonable, you know, Scott and the landlord or landowners. The violations of that put you at risk for this ordinance, for this uh initial use being revoked. Okay, thank you, everyone. Comments?
Mr. Chairman, do we need to, considering no one is living in the house, is there any reason that we need to uh journalize this decision tonight?
Um not to my knowledge, but Rich, do you want to weigh in on that or Jason?
Um. Just. I I don't know. Uh um. I am willing to take Scott's word that nobody's probably coming back until mid-January. Uh which will give the board plenty of time to get into their next meeting and approve the minutes of this meeting. Uh which will officially journalize this decision, so that this is not like a building project. Where somebody has been waiting for three months to get in front of the board to get a variance. You know, to to put their shed five feet away from the property line instead of ten. So um we we should be good if we just let things run their natural course.
Okay. So we just will, um so what that means um is that this will become officially active when we approve the minutes at our next meeting.
Correct.
Okay. All right, that concludes the public hearing portion of the uh meeting. I'm opening up to the regular meeting. Um the first is the acknowledge or the approval of the minutes from our November tenth meeting. Believe everybody was mailed a copy of those minutes uh in our packets. Uh what I will need is a motion to approve the minute.
I'll make a motion to approve the minute.
I'll second.
Dave, the motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Rachel, can you call the uh vote, please?
Okay, Ken?
Yes.
Dave Lindros?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave Inzera?
Yes. Okay, minutes are approved. Uh is there any old business to bring forth? Any new business?
Nothing, nothing for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um do we have any cases that you see anything coming up for December?
Um this is December. Give me January.
Yeah.
Prob- probably, you know, I'm I'm almost positive we'll have a case.
Okay. All right. Very good. Well, before I move to adjourn, I want to wish everyone happy holidays, uh stay safe and healthy. Uh um enjoy time with your family and friends and I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I will. I am more than happy to give you the motion as well.
Thank you. All right, do have a second. All right. Yeah, I move that we adjourn. Thank you, everyone. It's a a long but important meeting with a discussion and wish you all uh. Great holidays ahead. Thank you and good night.
All right.
Say well.
Take care. Have a Merry Christmas.
Night.
Night.